Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the joint FinCon meeting with the Board of Selectmen for April 19th, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic with its hands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence, please, for the officer that was killed down in Yarmouth Port, Shawn Gannon. And I want to acknowledge that the Hott Police Department, for their contribution, they sent an honor guard and two other officers, so that was a total of six officers that went down there. And we're proud to say that we were represented down there. Thank you.
We should lower the flags at half-nas.
I believe they already are.
They already are.
Okay. Opening comments.
I'll pass.
Mr. Lombard?
I'll pass.
Okay. Citizens Forum, anybody?
Mr. Chairman, we have one.
Yes. Clutches to the microphone, please.
Jeff Thomas, Little and the Hot Road. I just wanted to say that I just read Mike Meyer's brilliant letter, and I want to know if we can also condemn that little stretch of the Norton Road along with the Paper Road.
Okay. We're going to go through that in a minute. We've got a nice letter from Mike Meyer, an attorney from the Hott, that's asking us to condemn the road, the paper, it's actually a town road at Northeastern, and it's not quite, we're not sure where it is. They're doing a title search on it now, and if we condemn that, that would be a good thing for us. So, we're working on that now. And actually, they're talking about it now. Did you want to say something, too?
Just to reiterate the same question.
Okay.
What is it? Can I see? What is this?
Sure. You've got a letter right there with you. All right. I have a letter from the Hott Republican Committee. Dear Governor Baker, we, representing the Hott's Republican Town Committee, write to inform you that while we support science and education, we are opposed to the proposed expansion of the Northeastern University's Marine Science Center located on East Point, Nihant. We enlist your support in this manner. The town of Nihant, the smallest in the Commonwealth and situated on just one square mile of land, has welcomed the presence of MSC for 50 years. However, Northeastern's proposal to expand its facility on unspoiled land occupied by Northeastern and the town of Nihant would adversely affect the town's natural habitat, wetlands, birds, and wildlife. It would also impose expensive, unacceptable demands on Nihant's aging infrastructure. Expansion plans include constructing a 60,000-square-foot building in addition to the current 30,000-square-foot facility, resulting in a permanent industrialization of a residential community and causing negative results such as light and sound pollution. Further, the facility looks to accommodate other disciplines beyond marine science. Questioning the need for this massive and obtrusive structure to be built on one of Massachusetts' most beautiful environmentally rich areas, installing a new ocean water pumping system, which would greatly expand the current pumping capacity for experiments, this should not be pursued until after careful study of the impact on nearby marine life and the fisheries that provide livelihoods to local fishermen. Creating parking for an additional 185 cars on East Point, which will result in more traffic, pollution, and stress on the town's aging roads, as well as placing unreasonable demands on Nihant's municipal services, including limited police resources. Governor Baker, 60 percent of the Hott's voting residents have signed an open letter of opposition opposing Northeastern's expansion agenda. We, the Republican Town Committee, respectfully urge you to oppose MSC's expansion plans in Nihant. Respectfully yours, Nihant Republican Town Committee. Thank you. Very nice. And also, I would ask the town administrator and town council that we see if we can become exempt from the Dover Act.
Okay.
Okay? Can we get on that?
Well, I'll sit with town council.
All right. I'm not so sure if it's going to help us with this round, but I think we should try that because, I mean, we should try all angles if this is what we're going to do.
Well, I'll sit with town council, review our options and strategies, and go with that, okay?
Okay. That is it. Well, one more thing. I think you all know that I am writing a letter to the state for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program. I have five people, well, four people so far. Shawn and Abby Roberts, Katie Lauterhaus, and Christine Johnson-Lysia want to be part of this committee. And we have to send a letter to the state. It's very, it's, it's, there's a lot of work to it, but it's a good thing. I mean, it's all about sea level rising and how we're going to, we'll get technical help with it. We'll, we'll get grants. There's up, five million bucks up for grabs. And actually, Abby Roberts knows somebody that actually has done this before, so we're going to get her in and move ahead with that. And we'll get the letter out soon. I'm going to, I'd like to have them appointed, all right?
Do you want to?
I'll give you the list of them. And if anybody knows, if anybody else that wants to get on, I can tell you it's a lot of work, but come to us and we'll.
Just procedurally, Mr. Chairman, is, do you, is the committee already established, or does the board need to establish the committee?
Well, no, we need to establish it.
Okay. So maybe what I could do with your permission is that the next meeting we have, I'll set up the whole, you know, establish the committee, then appoint the people who are into it. We could do that at your next meeting if that's okay with you.
And in the meantime, I'll try to get the letter out. It's just, yeah, just to get it done.
We'll work on it.
And that's all I have. So now I'm going to turn it over to the review with our moderator, Mr. Conlon.
Thank you very much. We are here at the annual, pre-annual town meeting, and our goal for the evening is to review the articles that will be presented at the town meeting and see if there are any intriguing issues that may come up, and also to lay down the type of vote that will be required in order to pass each article. As we recall, articles awarding a salary have to have ballot vote. Articles dealing with borrowing have to have two-thirds vote, and the rest of the articles, except for anything dealing with prior year's payments, is, I think, nine-tenths vote. So, we're going to go through those tonight, and we'll start off, not with Article One, because that's a ballot vote for a vote, but for the annual resolution, which I believe is identical to what we've used last year and in prior years. So, the annual resolution will be offered before we start dealing with warrant articles, and that's a majority vote. And Article Number Two is a borrowing article for compensating balance. It's a standard article that we see every year. Because it's borrowing, it requires a two-thirds majority vote. And if anybody has any comments on any of these articles as we go through them, I would appreciate just letting me know. So, Article Number Three is to raise and appropriate certain transfers from various town accounts. It's a raise and appropriate, so it is not a borrowing article, so that would be a straight majority vote.
Mr. Moderator, there are salaries in there that are being transferred. Is that a problem?
Hmm. The salaries have already, this is to make up the salaries that were already voted in last year?
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, these are transfers from one account to the other, where we have excess funds in one account to make up potential deficits in the others. My experience is, at least in other communities, certainly not here, that those transfers are traditionally a majority vote. It's not a bonded article, so, but I defer, obviously, to you and your opinion on that matter.
We have a town bylaw that says anything that deals with awarding salaries, but I think these salaries have already been set forth, and all you're doing is.
Yes, they have. They've already been established. That's correct.
So, I will say it's a majority vote unless, but I'd ask town council to consider that and give me a recommendation so that we can be, we don't want to do anything that's not going to pass muster at town meeting. So this is Article Number Three, and the question is whether or not, because there are certain transfers that are being made in order to pay, to put money in accounts that are used to pay salaries, does that make it a paper ballot under the town bylaw? I understand that, but we try to treat these things with a kid glove, because you don't want to have something like this that passed, and then. I understand that, but that's also a town meeting. So there's a balance here. And I think probably it's a majority vote, but I would appreciate your input on that. If in doubt, I would do a ballot. Okay, Article Number Four is a snow and ice article, and again, it's a straight appropriation, so that would be a majority vote, I believe. Article Number Five is a salary and classification plan. And I believe what we've done in the past is, this is just to set up the plan, and it's not a paper ballot yet, but when the plan is funded, that's when we have a paper ballot. So I believe that's a majority vote. Article Six is compensation for elected positions, and I think that is a paper ballot. Five is setting, this is fix, oh, fixes salaries. I guess that's true. You're not awarding, you're not funding it yet. All right, I think you're right.
I could change, change every, yeah, it's always some.
It's a majority. I was thinking it was fix and. And pay, but it's not. Article Seven would be a nine-tenths vote. If it were to, if the motion to indefinitely postpone were defeated and it were brought up. Were there any prior fiscal year bills that were the subject to this?
At this time, no, Mr. Moderator.
Well, then, I can't see it's going to go to nine-tenths vote.
I would agree.
So, it would be straight majority vote on indefinite postponement. Article Eight is MWR, a borrowing article, and so this would be a two-thirds majority Article Nine is the omnibus article, which funds everything that we're going to be awarding here. So this would be a paper ballot. And I see that that confirms, I see the $3 for the selectmen, so that confirms what we said just a while ago. I don't know, these days, the dollar being worth what it is, whether you could consider that to be a compensation article, actually. The rest of them are definitely compensation, so.
I know the board, we always donate that dollar.
I donate my $35 to over $60.
Yeah. The taxes.
Article Ten is appropriation for the sewer fund, and I don't believe there's borrowing involved in it, so I think that's also a straight majority vote. Again, Article Eleven is the equipment for water and sewer, and again, it's an appropriation, so I think that's a majority vote.
Article Ten, there's salaries in there. The salaries in there for the public works, they're split up into the departments.
Oh, I see that. Okay, yeah, that would be a paper ballot then.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll have our tellers already appointed from the omnibus article, so we'll just hold them over for another vote. Article Eleven is pavement. No salaries there, that's a majority. Article Twelve does involve some salaries, so that would be a paper ballot. It's good to get these things aired out, because the town clerk has to know how many ballots to bring to the meeting. Article Thirteen is an appropriation for material remover, removal from the rubbish enterprise, so that's a majority vote. Article Fourteen is Chapter Nine, the highway fund, and that's, again, an appropriation, so that's a majority vote. Article Fifteen is paving, and it proposes to borrow a sum of $80,000, so that would be a two-thirds majority vote. Article Sixteen is to continue revolving account for the council on aging, and that would be a majority vote. Similarly, Article Seventeen, which is the revolving account for the cemetery, is a majority. And Article Eighteen, which is similarly for the recreation commission, that's also a majority vote. Now, Article Nineteen is interesting to me, and as I understand it, this is a way of supplementing prior borrowing articles by authorizing certain materials or premiums received by the town to be applied against the borrowing. So it isn't itself borrowing, but it's dealing with prior borrowing articles.
That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
So, if that's right, I think it's just a majority vote. It doesn't involve borrowing at all itself. It's just trying to deal with prior debts. Article Twenty indicates appropriation, but it also involves borrowing of $54,000, so that would be a two-thirds majority. And likewise, Article Twenty-One, which is for the structure to hire, to house the firetruck that was the subject of Article Twenty, and this borrowing is all already, so it's a two-thirds majority vote. Article Twenty-Two deals with the purchase of two pickup trucks, and it also involves borrowing, so that's a two-thirds majority. Article Twenty-Three is borrowing $4 million to pay the cost of improvement in the sewer infrastructure. Definitely two-thirds majority.
That article, I have that report.
Okay.
And you know something? I'll have those, we should have a bunch of them printed up, so for everybody to see when they can.
Okay. I can report.
Joint FinCon meeting?
Okay. I can also report to you, the town engineer will be here for town meeting to assist in answering questions of any, so we're doing all of that, too.
All right, good.
I found the recommendation of the FinCon interesting on that article, actually. Article Twenty-Four.
You were the one to throw the rock?
So, Article Twenty-Four is for borrowing to appropriate $100,000, $105,000 to fund improvements in the water distribution, two-thirds majority. Article Twenty-Five is a community preservation article, which is made up of a number of subarticles. And I see where it's suggesting that Mr. Lombard will make a motion to subdivide, and I can grant that as within my almost infinite powers of operating, because I'm higher than anybody else, because I'm up on the stage. So I can grant that subdivision without even taking a vote, Richie. So you bring it up, and I'm also have certain powers invested in by the New Jersey Turnpike Commission. I'll have to throw those into the mix. I'll do that as well.
I've got authorization from the Garden State Parkway, so.
We're competitors, then.
I did. And the Tapazee Bridge. Built a new one.
All right, so the various articles by the Community Preservation Fund are all coming from existing funds and don't involve borrowing, and they don't, I think, involve salaries. So all of those subdivided articles, subarticles are a straight majority vote. And if I missed something on that, I would love to know. So, twenty-five A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I. We can, look at that.
Stretch code? I know, but that's Article Twenty-Nine.
No, this is Article.
This is Twenty-Five Twenty.
Oh, okay.
You're talking about Article Twenty-Five K.
Yes.
Okay.
I can help with that. The town meeting does have the authority to appropriate or transfer funds, but it doesn't mean they have to expend it. So you can still do it, and if the wetlands doesn't occur, the funds would revert back to the community preservation, so you can handle it that way.
Good.
So I'm also wondering whether, if indeed the zoning article is withdrawn, is that something that the Community Preservation Committee would want to think about in terms of not voting on Twenty-Five K?
Probably.
I guess, I guess, no. I think not. Actually, I think not, because if it's.
It makes sense.
Yeah. If, if it's eventually, if we have a special town meeting and it's put into place, then this is.
In our hearing with the Community Preservation Committee, this came up, and the way that it was presented to the finance committee was that this was part of a larger study that they were looking to do of wetlands, and I believe there was also some rights of ways that were included. Previous authorizations in the Community Preservation Committee allowed for, and they have quite a bit of unexpendable money in rights of ways surveys. So I believe that this, in conjunction with that, was going to be a project that they were looking to finish up this year. So I would think that they would want to keep this regardless of what happens.
So the board is not trying to get the asgard of the result.
You know, that piece might be problematic in the motion.
Oh, you might want to take that out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know, we have to prefer that conservative check of that. But my understanding was that they don't.
Jeff, are you still a major domo in that group? No? I thought not. Okay.
And as we all know, with the Community Preservation Funds, the money sits there, and oftentimes, like, the rights of ways studies that was approved six or seven years ago continues to sit there, allocated yet unspent.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's known as receipts reserved for appropriation. You're absolutely correct.
So I would think, so you guys are, are you going to have your usual FinCon meeting before? So I think that's something you could amend this motion, and it wouldn't affect anything as far as what we're dealing with tonight. So I think that's fine. Just see how they feel about it, and maybe fix it, if you think it's necessary.
I think the voter will be confused, you know, if we don't correct the motion.
Yeah, I would think so.
You know what I mean? Especially with the zoning article right behind it.
Other years where the motion has differed from what was published, you would always say, from the beginning, this differs from, and then generally, it would less whoever's speaking is going to win.
And I can, I'll reach out to the Community Preservation.
It's not going to be the individual that separates these articles.
I would go with anyone.
Yeah, I know you would.
All right. Article Twenty, so I think that takes care of the voting, type of voting that's required through L, Twenty-Five L. Article Twenty-Six is the establishment of a special injury leave indemnity fund, which is a straight majority. Article Twenty-Seven is a bylaw amendment, which I think is also a straight majority, or the indefinitely postponement is a straight majority. Article Twenty-Eight is also a bylaw amendment, but this is what the, this is the zoning article that we were talking about before. So, it's a, it would be two-thirds if it does go forward, a zoning article, I believe, is two-thirds. And unless the indefinitely postpone goes forward, in which case it's a majority. And if the article is withdrawn, it's a non-vote.
Right.
Well, that might be, and looking at town meeting time, it doesn't, it cannot withdraw at a town meeting.
At town meeting.
Investigate as to whether it's possible to withdraw at four times. My guess is an extension, it might be different.
Is it possible to postpone to a date certain, as opposed to indefinitely postponing, if there were a date certain to postpone the vote to? Would that?
The statute reads that if it's unfavorably acted upon a zoning in the article, it cannot then be addressed again for two years. And one way to keep the article alive, it seems to me, is to put it back into the planning board for further consideration, and for future consideration at a later meeting.
So what would be the, the vote would be to send it back to the planning board?
I'm still looking to that, but that's language.
Most of the vote to recommit, but I think I would check that with maybe Massman, I suppose, or somebody. So. So, because I, I'm not sure that that would be, you know, I think if this article is dealt with, it's gonna be subject to every possible attack. Mr. Vett will be mounted, uh, from some of the most difficult lawyers we'll ever run into, so, uh, I think we gotta dot all the i's and cross all the t's on something like this. So I would really carefully check that out with whoever you can, especially Masminas. So article twenty-nine is a stretch energy, adopting the stretch energy code, and I believe that's simply a majority vote.
May I?
May.
If, back to twenty-eight.
Yeah.
If you vote to re-permit, can, is that possible on the floor to vote to re-permit? Or can that be done in a meeting beforehand and not meet, come up before us at town meeting?
Vote to recommit?
To, yeah, to send it back and have it re-permitted, re-done. Where do we stand on this, article twenty-eight?
You know, I think...
I'm still up in the air.
Let me ask you this, do we have a report from the, um, planning board on this?
No.
So, it wouldn't be able to be, I don't think, unless you've got a report from the planning board, I think you can bring it up.
No, they, they chose, they just said they supported it.
Well, they can do it orally or, or written, and their vote, I think, is an oral report, correct?
I don't know, I wasn't there. I was across the hall at the time.
I was at the planning board meeting.
Yeah, and they, did they vote to approve it?
They approved it, but they, there was no, not much talk on it.
Do you advise them that they need to report one way or the other and send a letter to the FinCon?
They came and met with the FinCon, and then...
I was there.
I had asked Dan.
Did they recommend, did they give you a good recommendation, a positive?
Good question, that's my question, so...
I think that they indicated that they had voted as a committee to recommend this article, and I think that, uh, Dan had sent me a checklist for the Attorney General's Office that warrant articles need to be reviewed by, and I got the impression that they could make that recommendation on the floor of Town Hall.
Yeah, they can do it the same day. There, there needs to be a waiting period if they don't make any recommendation, then there needs to be a waiting period, but they can make that recommendation. I think, I thought they already made a recommendation, I thought it was unanimous, unanimous vote.
Well, they have to make a report on Town Hall floor, they actually have to make a report in addition to...
That's the way I read it.
So they can do that at town meeting, or, yeah, town meeting.
Well...
I don't, I don't know that piece.
They know it, believe me, they know it. But, if they refuse to make a report, what happens then?
I don't think we can vote.
No, no, there's gotta be a waiting period, they cannot take a vote.
Okay, I'm just, there was...
Although...
So, so they're making a report, the planning board will be for this on Town Hall floor, potentially.
I think they have to pass it at a regular, at their own meeting, and then they, they have to make, any zoning article, they have to make a report on Town Hall floor as to how they, when they met, what their thoughts were, what everything is, and they have to make that report, or else the zoning article can't be, uh, voted on.
It might be a moot point, because if Brendan is right, that meeting occurred over three weeks ago, so then it doesn't need, then, then the planning board does not need to submit a report.
Right, that's, that's...
I don't know about that, but I know they do have to report it on Town Hall, or else it's annul it.
Unless the meeting was more than twenty-one days ago, that they had the hearing at, according to the, the checklist that I received today from the Attorney General's Office.
Right, it's, it's forty-eight...
But Dan should double, Dan should double check.
Yeah, it's forty-eight, chapter five, and it goes into...
Let me take, let me take a town, town meeting time first, I'd say.
Chapter forty-eight, session forty-eight?
Forty-eight, session five.
Forty-eight A?
Forty, forty A, sorry, yeah, forty A.
I got good hearing. Right, I'm gonna look at it myself.
But I guess all of it is moot if we can have the chair of the planning board give a favorable oral report, should that be the direction that it heads?
The statute reads, "No vote to adopt any such proposed ordinance or bylaw or amendment thereto shall be taken until a report with the recommendations by a planning board has been submitted to the town meeting or council, or twenty-one days after said hearing has elapsed without submission of such report." So Brendan's right, it's twenty-one days, and that meeting occurred more than twenty-one days.
So they don't have to, they don't have to get up on Town Meeting floor and speak on it?
They don't have to, if it's more than twenty-one days, if the dates are right.
But if, if they have voted unanimously for it, and you're indefinitely postponing it, they're gonna get up and fight it.
One more thing.
Run, yeah, okay, okay, that's, I'm just trying to set this in my mind, okay. Thank you.
But, not to go too deep down this rabbit hole...
Yeah.
But the word amendment, does that apply to the amendment to the amendment that's been presented, or does it only apply to the general amendment that was presented? So, there was an amendment to the zoning bylaws that was presented and heard on March twentieth.
Right.
Subsequently, a, a new amendment has been created.
And that hasn't been...
And that hasn't had a public hearing, so does that fall in the same category, because it's got the same general parameters, although some of the specifics are changed?
If it's a change, I, I would think if it's a changed article, and then this general, marker just leaves you free to, to introduce a zoning article, but if the article that you planned, that everyone wants to introduce is not the same article that the planning board has passed, I think the twenty-one day thing might not...
Yeah, the twenty-one days would be out, because it's a new article.
You need a public hearing.
So according to the Town Meeting Times, can a zoning bylaw be amended on the floor prior to vote, or does it, do we have to vote on the same amendment that the public hearing was had upon?
The footnote I just looked at wasn't specific as to that. I'll, I'll have to look into it a little bit more, and maybe Dan can...
Yeah, the statute's pretty clear, it's gotta be the amendment that the planning board heard, held a public hearing on, and then submitted or not did not submit a report. If, for some reason, the actual zoning bylaw amendment changes, well, that seems to be a whole new ballast at that point.
Yeah, I think also there's, uh, something to do with the compliance with the zoning bylaw that's offered, or any amendments on the floor to it, that have to be within the scope of the notice that we have given in the warrant. So, I believe that if there's amendments that would be considered to be within that scope, then we can undertake amendments to the specific article on the floor, and we've done that in the past. That's, makes me feel even warmer and fuzzy.
Excuse me, excuse me.
And you'll determine the scope of...
I'll be determining the scope of the, whether, I, I haven't, that's why I came in tonight, I was saying, where is that article? I, I haven't seen it, I don't know what's going on with it. I saw a, a rough draft of it, uh, before it went to the, uh, planning board, but I haven't seen anything since.
Do you have a copy of it, Jeff? The updated one? The updated one? One, give Dave one.
Let me take a peek, yeah. Have you got an extra copy for him?
So Brendan, the updated one, they, this can be read, then they can get up to amend it to the updated one.
That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Depending on the, I guess, the scope of the changes.
Well, they were supposed to have something for you guys to put as a, as a, um, an addition to the book, but they go to twenty-one days.
But then...
They had seven days to do that, now it's, I think we're...
Your book itself says, and I quote, "A copy of said proposal was filed at the town clerk's..."
But that is not the case.
That was my question, is that the case?
Well, copy of this isn't there.
Not that one.
Because...
That's the one you're gonna propose for town meeting.
That someone may prop, we're...
Yeah, may or may not.
As of now, we're, we're moving to indefinitely postpone.
Yes.
Someone may or may not present that document you have.
May not have any, anything to indefinitely postpone.
Thank you, I, I got, I got it.
I don't think that should be considered. The amendment, it's not, it's not in the book, and, and again...
And who's offering it?
Well, and then who is it submitted by?
Correct.
And usually, at the end of each article, it's submitted by such and such. But the, the jury, which is the townspeople, is expert, they won't have a chance to review the actual amendment.
Right.
It won't be here, we'll be discussing it, but it's not fair to them, we're not reading it in the book. And then, especially where you, it's, this article's in the book, and you indefinitely postponed it, I don't see how it can be considered, unless, I would consider that, you know, we, well, you know, it's not, it's like, it's late, this thing is late. And, and I apologize to the FinCon, the whole thing is late, by the time we had some problem, but I would put that off, I would not even consider that article, the amendment at all, until down the road, we'll probably have a special town meeting. There's no question in my mind, a special town meeting's coming, okay? Because, um, there's too much activity going on, and I don't wanna go into that, but that's probably the place, and I'd give it the taxpayers a chance to review what's being submitted, the amendment, and then a chance for the FinCon to review that article, amendment article, and the vote on it.
Okay.
Well, I would think the planning board, and maybe the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Absolutely. So, I, I think...
But if I may...
We, we can't wait, we can't have an amended article submitted last minute, with the board's, I mean, I haven't seen the amendment.
Hold on, but wait a minute, on, on this, I've seen it before, you, they vote down indefinite postponement, and then they come up with their own amendment.
I don't think it's, but I don't think it's legal.
Sure it is, it happened last year, it happens all the time.
But with the zoning bylaw?
I don't know about that.
That's the question, that's the key difference.
Because I, if they, wait, if I may finish, if, if they then amend it, then what Richie said, we don't have the twenty-one days, and we, it's, this is so confusing, we should just indefinitely postpone it.
So I think, this, I think you guys were not the authors of this, but it was really submitted by the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
So I think if you, either conditionally or directly, the board of, with, the boards who withdraw it...
No, but we sent it to the planning board.
I think you should, you should vote to withdraw it from the, from the, from the warrant, because of the changes that have gone through. I'm, I'm just glancing at them, there are several paragraphs dealing with, uh, various rights of people to continue to do things and stuff. Now, I, you might wanna do it conditionally, depending upon what Dan...
It can't be done at town meeting, I know that.
Well...
But the question I have to look into is whether it can be done before town meeting. My guess is that it's gonna be a no. We gotta find another way to keep it alive.
When the town clerk sends this to the, to the Attorney General, if this gets voted on, like T said, and it goes to the Attorney General, she has to send the minutes with it. They're gonna just throw it out, they'll throw it right out the window. They won't accept it, I can tell you, I mean, it's, they just won't accept it, so I think, I think we're right in saying that, no, we should try to eliminate it somehow.
Unless, of course, we can come up with a, a way, and you'll look, he's, Dan's gonna look into...
Okay.
How we can postpone it to a date certain, or send it back to the zoning board, or the planning board, to review the changes to the amended version of it, which, if we know we're having a special town meeting and we know the date, we could potentially, if it's within the periods under the, the statute that the zoning bylaws have, from filing to, to expiration before being acted upon.
Clarification for me?
Yes.
Does a vote to indefinitely postpone preclude us from revisiting this for two years?
It, it, it can go a long way towards that, the move, at, at this point in my mind, is to send it back to the planning board for further consideration, and then it can be at least argued that it's not an unfavorable act, just to look into this further.
Dan, if we withdraw that article tonight, vote, the Board of Selectmen vote.
Right.
It seemed like the Board of Selectmen put this in. Am I correct?
We did, yeah, I mean, I called the meeting.
We got it, so if we vote to withdraw that article, totally.
I don't, we, we can take the vote, just as prophylactic measure, but I'm not quite sure how effective it will be on town meeting day, I'll have to look into that between now and then.
If it's withdrawn, does that also trigger the two-year?
Two years?
Does that trigger the two-year?
Does what?
Moratorium.
Withdrawn. Oh, uh, again, I have to look into that, that's why, uh...
I wouldn't think so.
Dan, in, in the bylaws, oh, I'm sorry.
If it's withdrawn, it's not acted on in any way.
Right, at town meeting, there's no...
Town meeting, so there's no, uh, I would think that would not be a problem.
Do the bylaws have any timeframes on when the warrant can be reopened? I, I know they reopened it right before we went to print, are there anything in the bylaws that prescribe deadlines for reopening the warrant? Because if the warrant...
It's town bylaws?
Yeah, I, I believe that's where the, the, the opening and closing of the warrant is housed.
Also bylaws, well, I think there's a...
We have to make the move.
Have the motion to open the warrant again.
Mm-hmm.
And then vote that, withdraw, and then another vote to close the warrant, same night. But I think that's, you know, for the sake, for the sake of, for the sake of the, the people, reading, you know, the report, and then, you know, the motion and everything else, it makes sense, especially where down the road, we know we're gonna have a special town meeting.
This does open a door after town meeting, though, you realize that, right? Everybody knows that.
For what?
It's, it, this whole article will be eliminated, so...
Correct.
And, the newspaper advertisement and the whole amendment is no longer with us.
Yeah, but, it, it makes, makes no sense to proceed when we've got a, a new amendment to erase this one.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there so everybody knows what's, what's, what's gonna happen.
Well, that's, you know, we're, we're, it's immaterial, but we've got, we've got, we've got an article that...
Richie?
Yeah?
If I may, we're meeting the day of the town meeting, the three of us.
Yeah.
We could vote to withdraw it then, once Dan has all the answers.
Yeah.
Might be the safe thing to do, instead of, I'm not sure the timing, right?
Yeah, the town char, I'm looking at some stuff here, the town charter indicates that the posting of the warrant article shall be made within fourteen days of town meeting, more than that, so...
Yep.
We're on, we're on shaky ground here.
Okay.
The, the statute is seven days, but we can make it a bit broader, or more stricter, I should say, and we did, well, town charter did, and that's fourteen days, so...
Well, the FinCon's not recommending in the article that's in the, in the warrant now.
Right.
And they vote indefinitely postpone, so if we withdraw that one, and then, then we wait, and we start, we start fresh, and the timing on this, if this is the corrected one, make sure it's correct before we, uh, put it in a special town meeting.
The only issue with that is that if we have to indefinitely postpone it, it can't be re-looked at for two years.
Can it, can a variation of it be?
I, I don't know the answer to that.
If the article's not there, we, we just erase it completely.
Yeah.
From the, okay, and so your vote on definite postpone means nothing.
Correct, there's nothing to vote on.
There's nothing to vote on.
The question is, oh, can...
Can we? We don't know if we can.
We can't do it at town meeting, I can tell you that for a fact.
Would it be best for us to do that tonight? Instead of waiting for last minute?
I don't know, we, we can, we can try, we can at least make a vote, but I'm not quite sure how, how, how effective it will be, I have to look into it.
Could I suggest, uh, maybe, maybe an option is to make a motion to withdraw it, subject to review by town council, and depending upon town council's opinion, you can address it one last time on the day of town meeting, where we'll have a posted, uh, selectmen meeting, and it gives town council the opportunity to do, uh, review it, and if town council opines that you can withdraw it, then you're all set. And if not, then you will have to address whatever he researches the day of town meeting.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah.
Jerry, but the, my, my point is this, the article that's here is a moot point.
Right.
It just, it means nothing.
If it's withdrawn, yes.
It's gonna get voted down at town meeting, the finance committee voted it down already, the planning board, whatever they approve, but there's a brand new one that was just submitted to replace the one that's here.
I, I understand.
So, we shouldn't even bring this up, we should erase it completely, and then this new, uh, amendment, this new article of zoning should be, uh, re-submitted for the special town meeting.
And I would agree with that, I think the mech, to get, I agree with you.
But how do we get that?
The mechanism to do is to withdraw this and get ready for the special town meeting.
We have to take the action tonight.
Without prejudice too, yes.
Withdraw that article, and then have town council review it.
Exactly.
That's full motion, we gotta open the warrant, then...
No, you don't, I don't believe you have to open the warrant for this.
We do.
Town council to withdraw an article? Town council to withdraw an article?
We voted to close it.
No, you're right. I, I don't, just withdrawing it.
Again, we need 14 days notice for the final warrant, and we're within that 14 days, so if we try to open it again and try to close it again, as you mentioned, we're up, well, as Martyr mentioned, we're up for a, you know, a very sort of scorch of the earth fight in the future, this is just giving them fodder for that fight.
It seems like.
We're, we're beyond the, that.
All 14 days.
Yeah. So, it seems like you ought to make the motion and do it without prejudice, and condition it to.
Do I have a, do I have a motion?
I motion, Mr. Chairman, that we open the warrant.
I don't know that.
I don't think, it's not in, no.
We're not going to open the warrant.
No.
Okay, yeah.
No.
No, so.
It's not in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move the warrant, I, I move that we, Article 28, be removed from the current warrant.
Without prejudice, counsel? Without prejudice.
Have a second? Without prejudice? Without prejudice, yes.
Yes.
Second. Okay, any discussion on it? No. All those in favor?
Wait, 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 is there any discussion?
Is it supposed to be subject to renew, review by town council?
I would agree that would be a good.
Well, amended to say.
amended with subject review.
With town council, yes.
Okay.
Finance committee, any?
You guys all set?
You guys all set with it?
All those in favor? Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Right, now.
Dave, you're, you're on to the next one.
We go to Article 29, which is a stretch under, oh, we already did that. So, that's a majority vote. Now, we go to Article 30, which is the accepted provision of the general laws requiring automatic sprinkling syst, sprinkler systems. That's a majority vote. We go to Article 31, requiring sprinkler systems in new construction. That's a majority vote. It relates to flood remediation, and it involves borrowing $175,000, so that's a two-thirds majority vote. Article 33, no, I don't, that's a complicated article, but I don't see any salaries in Article 33 is sale of town-owned land, that's an indefinitely postponed majority vote. A sale of town-owned land, if that were taken back, is that two-thirds? I think it would be.
It is two-thirds, yeah. And any, any convenience?
Yeah. Then we get to the meat of the matter. Article 34 is to continue certain committees. And that would be a majority vote. And Article 35 is to accept gifts on behalf of certain programs. And that, again, is a majority vote. That will be the end of the town meeting.
Right.
At which point we will be.
Hopefully we'll go back. Thank you, Mr. Conlon. Thanks, Dave. Mr. Moderator.
I'd say thanks to everybody here, especially to the finance committee, what a great report you guys put out, dealing with rather difficult situations, where a lot of things were not known at the time of going to print. And I think it was very well done, and it did be a lot of hard work, and I appreciate that very much, and for the town road as well.
I, too, would like to thank the board of selectmen, the finance committee, for a very difficult year this year, and especially with town meeting and getting everything so late, apologize for that, and hopefully that won't happen again on all fronts.
I think they did a great job. I go, usually go to their meetings, and they work really hard, and usually I'll argue with them, but I can tell you that they're always right. So, I thank them for their service, and people should realize that it's a volunteer service, and they work really hard at it.
And the chairman, who has just returned to the table, didn't hear all these accolades, but you guys have done a fantastic job, and everybody at the table agrees with it. I haven't heard one dissenting opinion so far.
It's early.
There was one at the beginning of the meeting, but we, you know.
We're through.
You missed it, you missed it, you know, we thanked you, we thanked you, you know what I mean? The book was very well-written, so thank you for, with all the difficult times that you had, in the lateness of the budget.
The committee appreciates all that you all do.
Well, you're free.
You get what you pay for.
It's like, you know, but I know the board appreciates, especially the other chairman, you know, you've got to write a wrong article. Not only it's well-written, grammar and everything, it was, I think we made the right, right move on that Article 28, too, I think that would be, I think it would be better served.
I think that, that should be double-checked, though.
Yeah.
It says every way it can be done. The other thing I've been remiss in saying is the thank you to Jerry. This, he's jumped in at a very difficult time.
Yes.
And I don't know how many, how often do you get involved in town meetings, Jerry?
How long have I been involved in town meetings?
Yeah.
Uh, 32 years.
Yeah, but it's great that you were able to jump in and, and lend your, your fine-tuned support and experience to it, I think it's helped a lot, and it's a tough position for you to be in as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, are we done?
At the risk of spoiling the room, may I ask a question?
What's that?
At the risk of spoiling the room, may I ask a question?
Sure.
In the, in the recommendation for Article 23, we do point out that the town charter calls for a capital program committee, which does not appear to exist. I'm not sure if there's any, not to answer right this second, but I hope that creates some discussion over the floor elsewhere.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, well, the.
Mr. Chairman, I could help you with that if you like.
Okay, sure.
We are reviewing currently, with the staff, outstanding committees, I'm even going to talk about the insurance committee tomorrow when I get to my update, and one of the issues, you're right, the capital approval committee, and we're going to, the, the selectmen and I have been working on trying to find, get going on some committees that have been lagging, so that is on the to-do list, so to speak, yes, we are trying to address that.
I'd like to see a few outside people on that.
That'd be great.
If that's okay, you think that's a good idea?
I think I should, there's some detail on the bylaws, the talk in the charter that talks about.
Right, and I've read it, I've seen it, and, you know, there's a couple of committees that have kind of disappeared.
It's very, very difficult to get people to serve on these various committees. I mean, it's like, I've never seen it, you know, asking someone, it's, it's very difficult, and it's like, it's like the same ones serving, you know, they've been on the school committee, the finance committee, you know, they, you know, they, and it's extremely, I just wish more people would volunteer, and I, I think we need to address that, hopefully at town
I, you can guarantee it'll be done after the election.
No, they didn't hear me.
It'll be on my list, as, as chairman. It's really important.
Okay.
To set the money out there. Moving forward, town administrators.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, too.
What do we do? Yep, thank you.
Brendan? Thank you. I'll be sure to come down soon. Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies, thank you.
Nice job, Dave.
Thank you.
Hands up, hands up.
Yes.
Let me get to the, to the contracts, I got all the paperwork signed, okay?
Okay.
So, we're here, then I'm going to get to it.
Do you want me to say something about it?
Well, we're going to take a motion to approve, we'd very much like you to say something, yes.
I will. You know, we would have been better off if somebody had the time.
An update on some activities going on within the town hall, and within the community as well. Next week, I'll be meeting with the engineers associated with the WAF project, the slip there, as the chairman knows, you and I went down, we inspected it ourselves, there were a few issues been brought to my attention from some of the citizenry regarding that, so we're going to do a punch list and try to see if we can resolve whatever issues are going on, so that will occur sometime next week.
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
Um, I'd like to see, you know, and I was really, really, really tough on these people when they, when they came in, and they didn't really want to come back and deal with me, I guess, but I'd like to see Charles Engineering come back here, and the company that did the work, because I went down there and it's really, it's atrocious. The lower half of that slip is not, is really, it's not good, and the engineer, I, I would say, we're going to have to get some money back from them, I would say, don't pay the rest of the money out, because there's some issues with that, and it's, it's clearly visible to me, so we need to get him back in here to answer some real important questions.
I agree with you, I, as you know, when I looked at this stuff, and I've been talking to some of the citizens and some of the fishermen, actually, and I agree with you, I have serious reservations, my concern is, just from my perspective, I'm trying to get up to speed on a lot of it, and there was probably 500 to 600 pages of documents that I just have not had the chance, given everything else going on, but, but I agree with you, I, there were some areas, I, I totally agree, we need to do something on that, it is my intention to be very aggressive, to take care of that to the best, and I will be reporting back to the board, and then we'll make appropriate decisions, if you want a minute, we can work on that, too.
I would recommend that council get a hold of Charles Engineering.
Okay.
Instead of you.
Uh, well, I'm, I'm meeting with them, I already have a pre-arranged meeting next week already.
This is Charles Engineering, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but if you want, we can have town council involved.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I think so, because it's, I, I don't, it's a $600,000 project.
Yes.
And it just didn't.
About our court.
And I can, I can go on record as, you know, at the, some of the selectman meetings, I said it, it wasn't going to come out right.
Okay.
And.
Uh, what I can do is get, after the meeting, coordinate with Dan and have him at the meeting with the, we'll definitely do that.
All right, good.
Okay.
So we can get that remedied, all right.
Good, thank you.
Point you, Jerry?
Yes, sir.
As you go down the ramp, the wall on the left, if you go down there, that needs to be pointed up.
Yeah, you mentioned that, I have that on the list, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm just thinking, I'm not sure if there's money left over from the budget, but that, that whole section, if we don't point it up, it's just going to, we're going to lose the roadway.
I have several points, that's one of the points we're going to bring up in the meeting with the engineers and everything.
I thought that was part of the contract.
Richie, I'll be frank with you, I don't know the answer to that question.
Check the contract, I, I thought it was, they pointed the right side.
It could be, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, I just, you know.
But I plan on making sure we know this when we meet with them.
Unified, yeah.
Yeah, unified, right, so.
I just want to make, give you one reminder, too, that, you know, we unanimously voted, the board of selectmen, some months ago, that any expenditure over $1,000 has to be okayed with us, you know, has, has, we have to be CC'd on it, and we have to be, it has to be okayed, any expenditure from any department over $1,000, you gentlemen remember that? So, anything that's been spent.
Does that include payroll?
Not payroll, anything that has to do with, you know, buying, purchasing, anything big.
I was not aware of this, so.
I just wanted to let you know that that's.
There's quite a few, so how do you want to, I do sign off on a lot of the warrants, and, and I'll be very frank with you, I've been signing off warrants that do exceed $1,000. How do you want to, I'll do whatever you want, but.
This was to cure a problem of misspending, you know, people.
I got it.
Just going out, and we, we tried to do it, and it was, it was discouraged, we voted on it, it was a unanimous vote, and what happened was, it was never followed through with. I, I think that that can be handled if we do this through, for instance, me as chair, I'll come in and, and approve them. Unless all three of you want to do it, and I don't think you do. No, no, I'd like to, I'd like to be CC'd on it, if I'm so. Oh, absolutely. Yeah. No, that's what I'm saying. But I can approve it and then give you guys a, an update.
Yeah, I think, because we were told, we were told, A, and B happened, Jerry, and it was, it was constant, and there was.
It goes to the whole, maybe the trust issue you guys have concerns about.
There was personnel hired without authorization, without town meeting approval, and money spent, and it was, that's what happened.
Yeah.
You know, one of the reasons why we made the change.
Well, despite what those reasons were, it's looking forward.
Correct.
Just make sure that.
Yes, yes.
So let's not look back, look forward.
Yeah, when I look forward, right.
Going forward, yeah, so moving forward, we want to know.
Agreed.
And it's okay, we want to, it was just something we voted on, and we want to make you aware of it, if somebody wants to go out and buy something for $4,000.
I have, right, I got it.
We, they, one department bought something, a couple months, a month later, their generator blew up on their truck, and, and half of that money would have went to that generator, and as a result, we had to go to the reserve fund to take the money out.
I have, I can report to you, though it wasn't part of my report here, where I've kind of given pretty strong orders to the department as to start getting very fiscally conservative and cut back, and I told all of them I expected money to be returned back, and whether that's going to be achieved, I don't know, but I have talked to them about reducing the spending, given the tightness of the budget situation, but if it's okay with you through Mr. Taylor, we can certainly achieve what you want to do as well, if that's okay. All right?
Thank you.
We did put a second ad out for the DPW position through the American Public Works Association publication as of yesterday, and I can report to you, we do have three or four candidates that are intriguing to me, and, you know, we'll see how it goes, but I'm looking for more candidates as well, but that, that's an ongoing process, and I'm optimistic, I don't want to guarantee anything, but I'm optimistic we may get something positive done in that area. The police and fire chiefs are, have entered into negotiations with the city of Lynn regarding the dispatch, the, the contract is up, and so we're working on that. I have nothing to report, other than we're in negotiations, and I'll keep you abreast if something occurs with regard to that area. As you, I think already know from the previous meeting, we had some concerns, Vi-Patek came to you and requested permission to plant some trees in the lowlands area, but then we had some feedback from some of the lowlands residents of some concerns, I think probably the biggest issue is more communication. I have, I'm coordinating a meeting between the neighborhood and Ms. Patek, Patek and Diana Brand, I think her name is, to come in and brief the residents as to what the plan is, and with the goal of trying to make sure everybody's happy, so I'm hoping to get that done another week, week and a half, so we're going to coordinate that as well.
Jerry?
Yes.
That, those, that area, lowlands, involving the dump.
Yeah.
The, we're, we've got to remove what's down there, at the dump site, number one. Number two, we've got to dig out those ditches from, you know, Ward Road.
Right.
All the way to Keller Greens. All the way to Kelly Greens. They, you've gotta get a grade hall before you plant any trees or anything like that because these trees, you know...
What they're telling me, Rich, is, and I still, they call it the, I apologize, what is it, the path?
Heritage Trail.
Heritage Trade. I still remember us walking, walking it to go play ball down behind the firehouse. But, they're, they're looking at doing stuff along there. And as you know, the finance committee with your, you know, and you guys put it on the warrant, has $175,000, which they did recommend to do the dredging and the things, you know, that's so, it could be a coordinated effort. I'm hoping to do that. I think it's achievable that we can do that. Now, we also have $10,000 for the compost, as you know, there.
Right.
I'm hoping to, I agree with you on that. We're gonna bring that down for, for the, and I'm hoping, if we get a superintendent of Public Works on board, we can start coordinating an effort to make that happen.
You might want to start looking at who's dumping down there.
You know, it's funny, we mentioned, we talked about that. And talked about cameras and, and actually, we are looking at doing something along those lines. I'm gonna be honest, we don't have a solution yet, but we did have a discussion, yeah, I heard, but they're not working all the time. So, that's part of the problem. So, we need to fix some of that. But, we are, we've had some preliminary conversations. I have Dennis Ball coming in next Wednesday. I know he's, he's helping us a bit, part-time, and one of my agenda items to talk about this variation.
Those cameras working down there?
Not all the time, no. That's all I'm told. So, I'm working, I'm working on it.
That was a, that was a grant.
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. At this point.
The other thing is, we, we allotted $20,000 to have that, that ditch dredge from Ward Road to the golf course, through the golf course.
But, that was being put off, as I recall, to the fall. Remember, we talked about that, because of the season, they decided to do that in the fall. You're, you are right, but it's been delayed.
I don't, so, that money's still available?
Oh, yeah. As I understand it, yes, it is. And because of the golf season kicking and everything, the decision was made to wait till the fall. It's gonna get done. So, I'm kinda looking at doing that, coupled with the 175 and make it a one big kind of package.
But, when we did it, when we appropriated it, there was plenty of time for them to get it done.
I can't speak to that, I wasn't here for that, but I'm trying...
It's a concern because, you know, maybe the flooding wouldn't have been as bad. I mean, when you see soft walls on, on Lowlands field, you know that the ditch was just backed up, so...
So, my goal is to try to make that a coordinated effort for the, it's 19 and change, the 175, the, it's kind of a whole big package that I'm trying to make all happen here.
But, you gotta be careful on that 175. You've gotta make, you, you need an engineer to study that pumps, where that pump is gonna go...
Absolutely.
Underground. Because when we had the pump running down there, it was above ground, and the neighbors down there came to me and said, "Listen, this, this thing ran 24/7," which is, they didn't mind it, but they want the new pump...
Right.
To be underground. And we, and we just need to create that, that whole engineering, you know...
And that's what I'm hoping to do, when we put the specs out, if town meeting approves the 175.
And the pump, and the, and the, the pump and the drain has to run, you know, over to Doggy Beach.
Yeah, they're trying to clean out into Castle Road there, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, but you've got, you gotta be careful because that has to be checked, that outfall.
Yeah. That's part of the 175, yeah.
That sand moves.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
It's gonna be permitted and...
That's exactly what they've been arguing for, for since, for 23 years. And they have all the specs, they gave us everything. So, now, we just gotta make sure it gets done right.
But, we gotta make sure that end gets done first.
Right, exactly.
Kristen, that has to be permitted, correct? Any kind of stormwater pumps? Okay. And the Klonkamp can help with that, right? All right, good.
Thank you.
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. I know, Richie, we're all set for the flowers and decorations for town. We're, we're good, we're good to go on that, don't worry about it. Also, Richie, you mentioned the trees down the golf course. I checked with Anthony down there, and I did go down there myself. They, some trees have been removed. But, more importantly, I need to report to you, I wasn't aware of this myself, Anthony Di, Dean Madina, I think it's, Dean Dominicus, I apologize. He was informing me that some of the trees that also fall elsewhere, they're trying to get some sort of an auto barn designation for a golf course. I'm not a wizard at this, I could tell you that. And what they're doing with some of the trees, they're putting them off the side of the fairways and things of that nature. He does not want to remove them, all of them anyways, but he's removed some of the ones that was interfering, especially the sixth hole was, was a problem down there. So, he was very happy, he's, he's good to go. I also report, when I met him the other day, the, the building is just about completed and repaired, and so Anthony was pretty happy with the town and how that all played out. And so, I think we're all set on that as well. Along the lines of the capital improvement committee, which, which was mentioned by another of the finance committee, I, one of my concerns, since I've been here for four weeks now, is insurance. And making sure we're on top of insurance claims and getting our proper reimbursements and are there better ways of doing that. As I understand, the town used to have an insurance committee, which has been a bit defunct for a number of years, as I'm informed. I have asked a long time resident of the town who's lived his whole life, Rob Tibbo, who you all know as the harbor master, been involved in the town for many years, who's been in the insurance industry for many years, actually his whole career, as I understand it. He has agreed, free of charge, by the way, I told him that was the only way we would accept him, but he's gonna agree to come in and meet with me after town meeting, and he's gonna take a looksee at all our insurance positions, our insurance issues, whether the claims or the premium, whatever the case may be, and advise me as to whether we have opportunities to save the town some money here. So, so, I want to thank him for that. It's just kind of an ad hoc situation, but simultaneously, consistent with some of these committees, I'm gonna hopefully look at some of these committees, and I know it's difficult to get people to volunteer, but a few of them, I think the capital improvement committee, as well as the insurance committee, is one of those committees we really kinda want to get going because it has an impact on the finances of the town. So, it's something that my office and the staff are looking at as we speak, so...
Thank you, Mr. Tibbo.
And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well...
Collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining, that's next on the agenda, Andy.
Oh, you're going through the agenda. Northeastern, here.
Northeastern.
Northeastern and then...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
He's on committee appointment.
Thank you. I think you have in your...
Yeah.
Richie? Anybody want to make that?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, one of the members appointed by the, the board last week resigned. He had a conflict, but we have a new individual who's interested in joining the committee.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Bobby Joe Blair to the Northeastern Liaison Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Collective bargaining agreements.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I am absolutely pleased to report to the board that we have successfully negotiated with the police, fire, and public works unions, a one-year contract for 1%, basically during FY19. The, the contract would expire on June 30th, 2019. I, I would like to say, I have the paperwork here for you. If the board agrees to it, it's my strong recommendation to the board to approve this. This allows for some labor piece, if you will, over the next year, when you go through your transition with your new town administrator. I do want to report to you that I didn't know any of these individuals who I negotiated this with. They were all excellent individuals. I, I can't, I was so pleased to meet with them. What I got out of it is how dedicated they are to the town, and they understand the financial difficulties the town could be facing in the future. And I want to publicly thank them for what they did to try to, in such a short period of time, get three collective bargaining agreements ratified against subject to your approval. So, I'm pleased to report that to you, and I'm willing to happy to answer questions or if you want to make any comments about the matter.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the collective bargaining agreements for police, fire, and DPW for the period of 7/1/18 to 6/30/19.
Second. Okay, second for discussion. I want to also thank them for, for this, and this is the quickest I have ever seen this happen. I mean, this is great, Jerry, you did a great job. Brought them together, we worked it out, and, I mean, I think, I think we just signed their contract last year. Because it took so long for them to get, you know, to, to work through it last time. I think it's, it's great, and I'm impressed with your deep diligence.
If I may, I'd like to thank all the union guys, most, all of them, we know for sure. Thank you for this year. It's a very difficult year, and it was done very quickly, and I really want to thank all of you. Richie, just me sure you're clear. And while I was at it, I received an email, and I just would like to really thank Debbie Waters and Lisa Arena for all the hard work that they've done with the new town administrator to help him. Not that he needed much help, but he really did.
I need a lot of help.
Needs a lot of help. But, they did a great job, and I'd like to thank the rest of the town hall employees. They've been very cooperative, and they're really working well with Jerry. And I just, I come up here now regularly and I really can feel the atmosphere, it's very nice. Thank you to everyone.
I want to congratulate Jerry for negotiating this thing. I want to remind the, all three departments and town hall staff, they did an excellent job. And under stressful times, they've agreed to a contract of 1%. And as you know, the medical went up almost 6%. So, they're starting off next year in the hall. We cannot forget, we cannot forget this night when we're giving them 1%, but when we do have available cash available in the coming years, fiscal years, we should remind ourselves that we've gotta take care of them because they take care of us. They go along with these 1%ers, which is meaningful. I mean, it's just, really, it's tough. It's very, very difficult. We're a family, you know, with the medical rising rapidly, you know, the cost of living is going up, and we're giving 1%. And I, I just, I'm very proud of them. In fact, I'm so proud, I've, I'm gonna, we're gonna have a luncheon for all the town employees. I've asked the town administrator to set it up, and town council, too, and the board. So, have a special luncheon for all of them. Whenever you get the dates and the sequence, you can make sure they come and, and have a nice meal on the behalf of the board and the town administrator. I think it'll be a great thing, just to say kind of a thank you quick on a Friday afternoon, you know, and have it really, you know, catered, and make sure we take care of them, and kind of say thank you to them in roundabout ways, no matter what, whatever happens to this town, snowstorms, tornadoes, I don't care what it is, this team up here for public works, fire, police, town hall staff, they work as a one, very, I mean, it's like unbelievable the things that they do. And I also like to thank the townspeople. During these storms, so many residents and businesses drop by food, and for them all, while they're working 24 around the clock for two or three days. But, it's, it's just a great, great community, and it's a great, we've got a great town here, and we've got, hopefully, we get the new managers coming in here that we've got a really closely look at so that we get good management, and they're very supportive of the team. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Richie. Have I just, just for the citizens of the town, and I thank you, the luncheon you mentioned is compliments of the Board of Selectmen. This is being donated by the Board of Selectmen, it's not taxpayer money we're doing a luncheon on, it's the Board of Selectmen's way of trying to say thank you to the town employees for the good work they do, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for doing that. So, I just wanted to mention that.
My two cents, I want to thank Richie, he's the one who brought this up, I believe it was two meetings ago, and it was, uh-oh, where are we gonna get the money? So, Richie's smiling, so, thank you.
Thank you. And if I get that paperwork back from you guys, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, sign them quickly.
Sign them, get it back to me.
Yeah, yeah. Here, there, John. I get there outside, you can double check it out.
Johnson School?
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you.
Johnson School, Lenzel? Set next?
Yep.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Johnson School event request moving on ceremony.
Second.
6/12/18, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Town Hall.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one.
Let me do them, Richie, or you?
I got it. I moved the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Nahat youth soccer clinics at Flash Road Fields various dates, on various dates.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the Keep Nahat Wild info meeting, 4/25/18, Town Hall from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Let me get the page turned here.
Mr. Lico License.
Oh, is it? Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the all-alcoholic one-day lico license application by the Nahat Veterans Association for the Kentucky Derby fundraiser, 5/5/18, from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and the Memorial Day, 5/28/18 through 12:00 PM, 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM at the Nahat Lifesavers Center.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries, so...
Mr. Chairman, along those, I just need your signatures for this, for along that motion, if you'd be kind enough to, three of you sign that, I'd appreciate it. I'll take care of it.
Lico license?
Cutting down on the pins again, should be in. Okay.
Society, Lenzel? That's from before, right?
Yes, I want to make a, can I see, can I see?
That was May 19.
Right. This is...
It's already done. Probably my trip, no, it's May, yeah.
This is for the, I just want to let you know that...
Find that back, Richie.
Thank you. That the...
Thank you.
This wasn't the Historical Society. It was the, it was supposed to be, we needed clarification on that. It's the, the dance, the historical dance?
Oh.
So, it's got, so, and they wanted me to clarify that, so, I am. It's the...
Oh, gotcha.
It's a historical dance that they have up here via, and I can't really read it, but it has nothing to do with the Historical Society, so...
Do you want me to reintroduce it?
You can, sure.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a Historical Society...
It's not...
Oh, it's not the Vintage Ball?
It's the Vintage, Vintage Historical...
Oh, Vintage Historical Ball, okay. 5/19/18 from 6 to 10:00 PM, Town Hall.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do these people want something on here?
I don't... Jeff, you all set? Did you guys want to?
Paul?
Yeah. I was thinking, right in?
I don't think you have as much information as we do.
Where it says authorized. Come right up, we're talking to microphones, I can't, I'm sorry.
I think, I think you have as much information as we do. I assume you're talking about that paper road?
Yeah, well, we are, we're looking, you know, and I have talked to several people on this, condemning the paper road. Condemning the road, condemning the right-of-way, and then purchasing it, you know, in eminent domain. The town condemns it, so you can't use it. Then, we purchase it under eminent domain, and then we make it a public, public road. There's, there's many different ways to do it, but we're not sure if, where the public, the paper road is, or the public road.
Mm-hmm.
So, they're gonna have to, I mean, Keeping Nahat Wild and their attorneys are gonna So they're going to have to, I mean, uh, Keep Nahat Wild and, um, uh, their attorneys are going to have to figure that out. And our attorney also will figure that out with them. And it's a meeting scheduled, um, and it's good stuff, Mr. Meyer brought to our attention.
Well, I have one question. That is, isn't it already town property?
Well, it, it is, but we don't know, you know the road that goes in through Northeastern, along the beach there? They own that, I believe. We don't know, I mean, again, this is all...
Nobody really knows.
They were supposed to do a title search. I don't know how far they've gotten.
Yeah.
It's up to the attorneys to do that.
Okay.
So, and that's, that's their job.
I, I was just, I believe the new committee that was appointed tonight is going to look into this too.
Okay.
That, that the last person was, um, Bobby Joe.
Blair.
Was put on tonight, Bobby Joe Blair.
Okay. So there is a possibility then that there might be some action on that.
Right.
We're looking at every angle.
Every angle, every action possible, yes.
Okay.
We're going to leave no stone unturned.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, she asked about a timeline.
Oh, uh, well, it's up to them to, to, they, they have to work on it. They're working on it now. Our, our attorney is working on it. We have a very, very good attorney. They, uh, Cop, from Copeland Page, they do, um, and Dan's working, uh, our municipal lawyer is working with her. They do ninety-nine point nine percent municipal work. That's all they do. And they've done a great job. She's done a great job, the legal work, and she's, she's going to work with their attorney, got to keep, keep Nahat Wild.
And that group was formed tonight.
Right.
For the first time, so they're definitely going to look into it.
Well, not to get...
I don't think we want to give you a timeline, but...
No, we can't give town...
We, we, we'll, we'll keep you updated, though.
Okay.
Keep the whole town updated.
We'll keep it on the agenda for us so that the chairman keeps mentioning it, where we at on that.
Yeah. Well, notwithstanding the fact that I have a great imagination and not to get a little too wild, but, um, if that doesn't work, what about the possibility of turning Nahat Road, right after Little Nahat, into a toll road or something like that?
Yeah.
Or just condemn all of Nahat Road, you know?
Because, um, they've been talking about, you know, limiting trucks, you know, the size of trucks going up in Nahat Road. But then if we did that, if somebody up, up in, uh, East Point wants to force some cement, what are you going to do? I mean...
You've got to make an exception.
You're going to limit it, you can't, you have to hand shovel the cement up there, you know?
Local traffic only or something.
So there's always, there's always something. It has to be really carefully looked at. The whole thing does.
But, by the way, that reminds me, I, I owe somebody a thank you. I don't know who it is, but, uh, up on Burpee Road in Little Nahat lately, we've been having a problem with trucks getting stuck up there. There were like six big trucks, you know, gravel trucks, huge delivery trucks, you name it. I even stopped, there were two guys, they'd all get stuck at the corner of James Road and Burpee. And so I went and I, I asked these two guys, they were in a truck from North Carolina. I said, "Are you lost?" And they didn't even mean to come to Nahat. And I asked them what their, they said it was their GPS. So I asked them who their GPS was. They said Rand McNally. So apparently there's something in the GPS that is wrong, that is directing trucks out here. Trucks that don't even mean to come to Nahat. So then they go around Wilson Road and onto Little Nahat Road and they wind up on Lennox Road and they get stuck on James Street. And I'm talking about huge trucks. And I haven't seen any in a week. I did talk to one of the policemen. So somebody is doing something, but it seems like those trucks aren't coming anymore.
We told them all about you.
We also have, we also have very good policemen too. That, I see them out there all the time. They must have said, oh, this is enough.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I don't see them coming out anymore.
We, we've got a problem. We've got a problem with these huge eighteen-wheelers. And, and the weight of these factors, uh, especially on Willer Road supplying, you know, whether it's beer or whatever it is, these things are huge. They even have huge buses going down for the weddings, which is, the problem is the water, sewer and gas is not as deep and it's embedded in ledge.
Mm-hmm.
And they go down with these heavy, they, you, you can see the streets with the squares where the gas companies dug up. It looks like checkerboard square down there, okay? And Little Nahat the same way. That's a lot of ledge and they cannot, these, these roads cannot take the weight of these heavy eighteen-wheeler trucks. So we're looking into that. I know I am because it's affecting, uh, the gas company, you know, they have to shut down the roads, dig up the gas main and, and fix the break. And these pipes, especially the sewer and the water are old. They're a hundred years old. So any kind of weight or force down, it breaks. And, um...
Yeah.
We've got, we've got a contractor, uh, Grenice is the contract that we use, but January, when they have to fix a water main or a sewer main, you know what I mean? It, it's very tough and it's very, very expensive.
Believe me, I know this because I have a gas leak underneath Little Nahat Road right in front of my house.
You do?
And the way I found, it's on, I'm on the list now, but the way I found out about this is that we had gas in our basement in that cold snap in January.
Yeah.
We called National Grid. The guy came out and he spent half an hour looking inside and out. He finally came back and he said, "The reason you're having gas in your house is because the road and underneath it is so frozen that the leak has nowhere to dissipate and it's following your cold water pipe up into your basement."
Jerry, would you check on that with National Grid, especially on these, these gas? Because we've got to, you know, either, you know, either get new, new piping. Because ever since they put the high-pressure, uh, gas, uh, coming across the causeway in, into the corner of, uh, Little Nahat, they moved it and, uh, Castle and Nahat Road, they moved the high-pressure gas lane and the pipes are not taking it. The pipes are just cracking.
Yeah, yeah.
If, if I may end this with one final story, back in the nineties, I was chairman of the school committee and it was proposed to, to us, and I have no clue why, that coming into Nahat become a toll road. You have to live in Nahat all your life to see things like that.
I might add, Jer, Jerry, talk to Nick Brochon. Have you met him? Nick Bro, Brochon?
Who's Nick Brochon?
I don't know who that is. He's, he's the guy that came here at town meeting last year about the gas leaks.
Oh, right. He was here tonight?
Yeah, he was here. Nick's, Nick's a friend. He's a good guy. He knows everything you need to know about this. And we're part, we are part of a lawsuit, you know? The town of Nahat is part of a law, I'm trying to think of the name of the company that we, we're using. Uh, they'll, they'll replace trees. Uh, there's so many gas leaks everywhere, it's unbelievable. And Nahat has tons of them.
Supposedly they're going to get to it in May, but I'm sure that it's at least partly because of all the trucks.
Oh, yeah.
You know, there's, sometimes you get like two, three semis a day going past our house.
And people don't realize, some of the gas lines, that deep. You know, in front of my house, that's, that's how deep it is. And it's like, if you shove it on the ground, you're going to go right through the gas line.
It's one of the main reasons why we can't put the dome over Nahat. Everybody would have fixed it six years ago.
We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second. We are adjourned.